I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Tuskegee Valley Board of Education for October to order. Mr. Phillips, would you please call the roll?
This is me.
Present.
This is me.
Present.
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 Present. Present. Present. Could we all stand for the pledge of ladies and remain standing for the invocation?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just stopped and paused to honor you and just say how much we love you tonight. We just thank you for all that you've done for this school. We just thank you for what you're continuing to do for this school. And God, I just personally just want to thank you just for our teachers and our staff, everybody that we have, and just the heart that they have for our students, Lord. Just continue to give them wisdom on how to speak into the children's lives, right where they're at as an individual and not as a whole classroom. And I thank you for that. All the way down to the janitors and everybody, God, we just thank you so much for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, Dr. Bransky, is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There is not.
Okay, moving ahead, we have our Board of Education goals. Dr. Bransky, is there any public participation?
There is not.
Okay, so we are now down to the superintendent's report.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Mr. Gooding. I just wanted to first point out under my report that October is National Principals Month, so we have two of our principals here, our core principals. So Mr. Phillips out of the middle high school, Mr. Street from the elementary. Of course, they are assisted by Mr. Fogel as the assistant principal at the middle high school and Mrs. McAlwee at the elementary school. Even though Mr. Street and Mr. Phillips has been here for a while, what they originally were hired in, the building that they originally ran, is different. So they've had a lot of change in the last few years, and our two assistants are brand new this year. All four are working wonderfully together. I believe that the beginning of the year has been very smooth, lots of compliments about their leadership. So I just want to use this opportunity to publicly thank you both for your leadership and all you're doing to run your building. So, thank you. Second thing, before I turn it over for Students of the Month, underneath your agenda, you should have a copy of the district report card. I did do a public social media post in September when this came out, but we are required by law to make sure that we announce this to our community and share an overview of what's happening in the district. So like I said in my post, I'm thrilled with the accomplishments of our students and staff. If you're not aware, the district is rated on a five-star rating system, and we are four out of five stars. Three is what the state's looking for. So they're asking districts to be a minimum of three. We are a four. And so I'm thrilled with that, that we are exceeding the state standards of what's required of us. Lower on the page is the different categories that we're rated on. And again, three is what we're looking for. Anything above three is exceeding the state standards. And as you can see, we are three and above in all categories. So real quick, just so you know what these each categories mean, achievement is based on state tests. So again, this is how students are doing on a given day, on a given test. And then they put all of those together, and basically, we find out how many students pass the state assessment in each of those categories, and then we get our performance index. Performance index is a measure, it's a calculation, of how all of our students that take a state test as an entire group are performing. And that's what I use personally when I'm looking at the data from the state report card of how we are doing. And then I compare that across the state. What does this look like from the schools in Tuscaloosa County and in the northeast region of the state, and so forth? And again, our numbers are very high. Our performance index has dropped a little bit since the previous school year, but so did every, almost every other district in Tuscaloosa County did as well. So then we have the conversations about, well, state tests changed and so forth. So overall, that's still a very, very high number, and I'm pleased with that. Progress, that's a category of, it shows growth. So is our students staying on track? Are they staying where they need to be as they move from grade level to grade level? And we're doing well there. Gap closing. Gap closing is asking if we're meeting the needs of our most vulnerable students. For students at Tuskegee Valley, that's either going to be students that have free, that are identified as having free and reduced lunch, or students with disabilities. And so it measures those two categories, are they keeping, are we expecting the same thing of those subcategories as we do everybody else? And of course, we are. And you can see, we far exceed the state requirement there. Graduation, again, very, very good. You can see our four-year graduation rate and our five years, so we are exceeding the state standards there. Early literacy, early literacy is a little bit misleading, and we've had a lot of conversations, Mr. Street and I have had a lot of conversations. You'll notice that there are three categories underneath early literacy that, and that's how you get your rating. The one is improving K-3 literacy. So we have something that's called a reading improvement and monitoring plan. And what has happened is because previously, we are in the primary school with only two grade levels, we don't, there's not enough, because the building was so small with only two grade levels, there's not enough longevity to show that students are exceeding in reading and they're coming off those plans. So when you pull it up, even though primary was rated as an early site for literacy because of the great work our teachers are doing, the data didn't necessarily all show that, and that pulls down our entire district score. So I'm confident now that we are in a K-6 building that that score is going to look much better moving forward. Third grade reading proficiency, that's the percentage of students that pass that test at eighty percent or higher. And then promotion to fourth grade, the number of kids that we are moving on. And all three of those go together and equal that early literacy score. And as you can see, we have met that as well. College career workforce and military readiness is not evaluated, but basically what that is, is they take the number of students that are scoring remediation-free on the ACT assessment that we require juniors to take. It's looking at the number of kids that are taking AP courses, CCP courses, industry credentials, whether they're here with us or down at Buckeye Career Center. And it adds all of those up, and you're getting a percentage of students who are ready to go on into the workforce. So that number has consistently continued to rise from year to year to year, so we are on the right track there as well. So again, overall, the report card doesn't, it's just, it's just a snapshot in time. And that's why we have other assessments like the MAP assessment and the AIMS Web Assessment. So we use all of those together to make good decisions on instruction and curriculum in the district. But overall, again, just publicly very proud of our teachers, very proud of our students for a job well done. Any questions about the district report card from the board, though?
I do.
Yes.
So I reviewed this, and the question I have for our overall test score on early literacy, our elementary, I just went back and verified it, our elementary early literacy was a four-star. So what I don't understand is if we're a four-star in elementary and early literacy is elementary, why then did we get pulled down to a three-star? Do you understand that?
Yes. So this score is based on each individual building. So this is reflecting of the primary school being in operation and the elementary school. Last year, it would have been this facility, so that's two through six.
So we had to combine the two.
So what happens is if you look at that early, the elementary looks good because there's enough grade spans where it's showing that kids are coming off those plans. We don't play any games with that. We're very sincere. If we're putting a kid on an improvement plan, it's because they need to be on an improvement plan. And we're just not taking them off just simply because we can. What we like to do is make sure that we're monitoring for a while, they are good to go before we remove that service. So when you brought primary on there, there's not enough time in K-1 to bring enough kids off. The other thing is we're a small district, so when we only have a hundred kids per grade level, and we only have a certain number of kids on there, and we are able to take five off of that, it's not a huge percentage like large schools that have maybe a couple hundred kids per grade level that they're able to pull kids off of. So this is a district, the report card that we're looking at tonight is the overall district. So this is combined of three buildings coming together to one. Next year's report card will just be our two new buildings, the new elementary, the new middle high school coming together. So this is a score that we're pretty confident will increase.
I was going to ask you so.
When we have more grade levels and more kids to pull from.
That's what I was guessing.
Yep, yep.
We are trying to work on changing the report card to making it more, less punitive and more positive. And one thing that I see across the state is early literacy is not working, the criteria for that. And so any help you can give me in understanding that a little better.
Sure.
To share that and how we need to change that. You explained it very well. When the smallest districts don't have that number that can get off, you're already hindered.
Yeah.
And if you only have them in banding like we do, because it's better educationally for our students, then we are penalized because of that. And we don't want that if we should get a new report card. We want something that'll work and really show what's happening. Because I think we did a great job this year educationally. We worked very hard with our students and in line with what was going on. And so I'm very happy with our report card, but, and it's not, it's only just, like you say, a snapshot in time, but it's important that we understand the growth of our kids and make sure that they're getting what they need. So I appreciate you sharing that with us.
Yep, absolutely.
The only other thing I ask about is graduation. And our graduation is a four, and my question is, we're trying to change the graduation requirement as well because a lot of kids go for five years and we're getting penalized for that. If we did not have that, meaning the kids who get, we wouldn't be penalized for kids to go to the fifth grade, five years. Would we then raise our star? Do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, would it increase? Possibly. Yeah, there's a lot of factors that go into that. Some are, some are, just kids are turning eighteen and they're dropping out. As hard as we're trying to keep them here, and Mr. Phillips meets with them and talks about the just, the consequences if you don't get a high school diploma. But ultimately, once they're eighteen, if that's what they choose to do, we can't help that. The other thing is, the law has changed a lot with students with disabilities, and that's where you used to have a lot more leeway with this graduation requirements, and then they took a lot of that away. So again, Mrs. Wells is our special ed director, is working closely with Mr. Phillips for those students with disabilities to make sure they have everything they need for graduation way in advance. Because right now, with the way that the law reads, we do struggle with that. So.
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions on the report card? Okay, I'll turn things over to Mr. Phillips for Student of the Month.
Okay, I'll first say that unfortunately, two, we're not able to make it today. So Ava Stavens is our Student of the Month for her best first impression. She actually is only in her second year here at Tuskegee Valley. She moved in, moved here last year. So she's, this year was nominated for her best first impression. And then Danica Dolak is our Fine Arts of the Month. She was nominated by Mr. Jacobs. She also is a very important part of our TV online as well as what she does in art. The one we do have here tonight is Hattie Carroll. So, come on up. So she is a senior, the daughter of, oh my gosh, I didn't ask that to pronounce her name. Mrs. Carroll and. She's a member of our golf team, and she was recently named First Team All-Ibacy. She also shot a school record, sixty-eight for eighteen holes this season. So our, which was awesome. She helped lead our Lady Trojans to the, it's called a sectional, the first round of the tournament. Unfortunately, the second round of the tournament to go to the state tournament, that was her fault overall. Carroll just needed to stand by five strokes.
Three strokes.
Oh, nice.
Off of a bladed chip from the fifth player, the lucky one to hit the flag.
That was amazing, actually. For the ball. If it was against us, it would have been totally amazing. Her hobbies include practicing Spanish, swimming, hiking, and softball. And after graduation, she plans to pursue a doctorate degree in preparation for law school, be employed in the J. Golf. So congratulations.
Congratulations. I'll just have to take a picture of your, um.
Oh, yes, yes.
Whoops, I couldn't choose since I'm awful. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Well, Hattie, I just want to say this. Scoring a sixty-eight is tremendous. When I first started playing golf, I scored a sixty-five. That was for nine holes. So you've done very well. Great, congratulations. Yeah, awesome.
I remember seeing you once. Were you at the gym? I was at the gym. It was, yeah. It was like at five in the morning, yeah.
Thank you. Hattie, congratulations. Hattie's part of the new Leadership Research Symposium that Dr. Barr and I are leading. So we met last week for the first time. I was blown away by her insight into things. And again, she's got a bright future, and I really hope that I never find myself in trouble where I go against her court. Did I hear her argue her case with her classmates last week? So, but Hattie, congratulations. And thank you for everything you do for Tuskegee Valley. Right. Mr. Gooding, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. And moving on, we have a board member report, Mrs. Sally Green.
Thank you. Okay, first of all, obviously, my term is coming to close. By the end of October, I've visited sixty-six counties of our eighty-eight counties, okay? So I am traveling, but the time is short now. So I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your support. I really appreciate it. The thing that I, it's that time of year also prior to Capitol Conference that we need to talk about the delegate business meeting and what is going to be proposed there. So in front of you is two proposals that have been vetted by the Legislative Platform Committee, and these two will be brought forth to the State Delegate Assembly. And we as a board need to help recommend to our delegate, which has been, what we want him to vote on or how we want him to vote on it. So I want to go over both of these, and then I'll ask if you have any questions and/or, and Mark is going to, most of these are financials, so he's going to kind of weigh in here a little too. But the first one is given by Woodmore, which is by Sandusky. And basically, what it's adding to the platform is it allows districts to change for labor costs directly associated with receiving and fulfilling a public records request. So the first thing I wanted to say is, what's happening is, people are inundating school districts now with requests. And what happens is you have to redact all the student information in those, in that information. That takes time. It takes energy. Some school districts, especially the larger ones, have two full-time people doing this, redacting. And they're trying to inundate information, looking for something so that they can cause a lawsuit. And we have a person that's going around the state just trying to find lawsuits in school boards. That's how he pays his bills. So we're really trying to cut down these labor costs. And before I go any further, do you have any, would you like anything additional to that?
No, again, we don't really have a lot of requests here, and typically, it's around special education students is where you get those voluminous requests that take a lot of time and effort. But I have heard, Sally speaking of, even locally within surrounding counties where someone, a specific person who just continually makes records requests, and the treasurer's office has basically had to bring in an additional staff member to fulfill those requests.
So the way I understand this, then, the OSBA would like to see them changed so that we could charge the total labor cost, for instance.
Or something, yes.
Yes.
And so that if they have to pay something, because they get it for free, they only have to pay for the paper. They don't have to pay for anything else. And so it makes them more mindful of what they're asking for, to be honest. The other thing about both of these requests, it just went on my mind when you said that, and hopefully, it'll come back by the time I finish.
So fees also, the first part of that, the first bullet point up there, I mean, it talks about eliminating or reducing state imposed fees for board of elections or auditor's expenses. So I think it feels like it was about five years ago, there was a change in the law where if you're on the ballot for a levy or something.
Yeah.
And it's a special election or an off-election where there's nothing else on the ballot, you, that after government, have to pay for one-hundred percent of the cost of the election. And it wasn't like that, again, something like five years ago or something. So it looks like, again, they're trying to potentially reduce or, you know, reverse that decision. And also auditor fees. So the auditor, the treasurer, you know, they bill and collect taxes on behalf of governments, and they get a percentage of those fees that are collected, and it's a hefty amount for us, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars is the fee that they have. So then think about all of the other school districts and entities. That's sort of what's funding those offices. So I'm assuming that's sort of where this is targeted.
And so both of these are financial issues, and while we might not be personally involved in these two, what is, we need to keep in mind is that they're trying to change the, in the budget year next year, they're going to be looking at changing the tax laws. And we need to make sure that we can provide this information to them, that we're paying for this stuff already, and now you want to take more money away from us. And this is kind of saying, we have all these costs that you make us do for free, but you want to take more money. So it's just an added involvement of why we need to support this. Number two is, the resolution is, was by Shawnee Creek, was by Allen County. And basically, what it's asking for, it requires school tax levying money, which has been voted upon to be used for the funding of schools, be exempt from the tax, the TIP law, under the ORC 570940 and Community Reinvestment Act. So basically, what's happening is when these big companies are coming in, they're getting tax abatements. But when they come in, there's all these kids coming in, and the kid, the school is not getting the money because the tax abatement holds that for the period of time, it could be ten, twenty years. So you get all these influxes of kids that you're not getting any more money from. Parents don't have to pay it, and the investment doesn't have to pay it. So they're trying to avoid that, saying, you can have a tip if you want a tip, but you can't take away the school money. The school money is the school money. And I'll turn it over to you. Did I do that okay?
Yeah, it defined. So again, I think it's about giving the school board a seat at the table. So when you look at your property tax bill, anybody's property tax bill, about seventy-five percent of that tax bill comes to the school district. But there's people who are approving tax abatements absent the school district at the table. So it's being approved where we're the individuals who have seventy-five percent of the money at stake. So we're just asking, I think, also to just have a seat at the table and to be able to participate in approving tax payments.
Okay, any questions on either of those two? Any objections to these? Okay, Ben, you got your answer.
Got my answer, okay. Okay. Okay, anything else, Mrs. Green?
No, those are mine.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move to the new business consent agenda that is going to be from the numeral six, A, one through twelve. Could I have a motion, please, to approve?
I'll make one.
All right, may it move. Do we have a second?
A second.
Eighty-second. Discussion.
Once again, just thanking all of the donations that contribute to different parts of our school and programs.
I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
One other thing, which I, kudos, thanks for saying this, so I won't repeat it. But the other thing is the eighth grade Washington DC trip, I had two interesting enough students. I had two interesting enough students while I was at the football game come up to me that were seniors that did not get the experience because of the event. I think it was 911, right? Or COVID?
COVID, definitely COVID.
It was COVID. Sorry, it was COVID. I thought that was far gone. Okay, so COVID, is there any thoughts to let, not allowing them to go with the eighth graders, but having a separate one for seniors for who missed that, who really want to go?
We try to entertain it for a while, but with sports schedules, the problem is you can never find a date that works for high school kids without missing something. And so it was hard to get anybody to commit to a date. That was a few years ago when we looked into that, so we just decided we weren't doing it. So yes, there was two grade levels that did not get to go because of COVID.
Okay, thank you.
I had a point and that's item number four, just so that our public knows that we are going to be changing the date for the November board meeting to the following Monday. That would be November 18th because of being down at the Capitol Conference. Any other discussion? Okay, let's proceed to vote. Mr. Phillips?
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes. Item B, the following recommendations are made by the Superintendent to grant supplemental contracts for next year as follows, pending verification of all credentials. And this would be for Katie Berger as a volunteer for middle school. It is middle school, right? For those basketball.
It's for this year.
It's for this year, yes. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
All right. Sally, move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ben, second. All those in favor? Or Mr. Phillips? You do the control call.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Abstain.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes. Item C, the following recommendations are by the Superintendent's designating Mr. Jason Phillips. One is approve maternity leave in conjunction with the FMLA for Kayla Cock. And also the second is for the following individuals for the 21st Century Community Learning Center positions in accordance with those particular requirements. So do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Katie, move. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Green, second. Any discussion?
Well, we thank everyone who is doing this. 21st Century really is helping our students, so we really appreciate it. I, question is, is it here now or did we move it to the elementary building?
It's at the elementary school, yeah.
Good.
Do you know how many we have and how many kids? Because it started already.
Mr. Street, do you know how many is?
Yeah, it depends on the day, the week, Monday through Thursday. So some kids come every day, some are just a few, but I mean, most nights we have right around 80 to 100, if not more.
Great.
Super.
Yeah, and just so you're clear, Mrs. Clements is now overseeing the 21st Century program as program manager. Mr. Street is serving as site coordinator, so that's a change from last year.
Good. Hearing no other comments, let's move to vote. Mr. Phillips?
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes. Okay, our leadership team reports. We did receive those by way of email, but Mr. Phillips, is there anything to add to yours?
I don't think so.
Okay. Mr. Street?
The only thing I just want to point out is we have a lot of fun things happening at the elementary school, so you are all welcome to come anytime, you know, depending on your schedule. We have cook fair going on right now. We have the school, of course, who will be here. And one of the things we started last year that the teachers want to continue on was Grandparents Day, where they'll be coming in. We'll be using the new, our School Safe ID system. We tested that out in the office today about emailing that out so people can register in advance, so there's not a big long line at the door. And I told the kindergarten teachers, I was going to tell everybody, this is their idea. They wanted to do it on Halloween for kindergarten because they said the day is already a crapshoot. Everybody said, we might as well invite the grandparents in the morning and do our parties in the afternoon. So kindergarten will be early first and then first grade is actually in a line there with their time machine projects in November. So we're just going to have everybody in the cafeteria then and then of course, going back to Halloween. It's just a fun day, fun day with everyone dressed up on the 31st at the elementary. So I'd love to see anybody who's able to.
Just remember, grandparents are important. Yes. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Powell?
I have nothing more to add.
Nothing more to add? Okay.
I would like to say that the white suburban looks nice with the TV on the side.
Yes, I was going to comment on that, so I'm glad you did. Okay, that ends our leadership team reports. We do not have any public participation, so on the announcements, TV LS will host the Boo at the School on October 28th from 5 to 7. All K-6 students and families are invited. And as noted earlier, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held November 18th at 6:00 PM right here in the Community Board Room. If no other business comes before the board, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Katie, move. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Berger? Mr. Phillips, call the roll.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooding?
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Don't forget, go to the [inaudible].